Questions at the end, more discussion as we move it forward. So, good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Operations 911 PSAP Town Hall Meeting. I'm Brenda Brunner, EMP, RPL, Manager of Emergency Services Dispatch with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office, California AppCo State 911 Advisory Board Representative, Former Northern California AppCo President, and will be your moderator for this event. Our panelists include Alina Wiggins, RPL, EMP Supervisor with the Alameda County Sheriff's Office, and the current President of the Northern California Chapter of AppCo International. She's been in dispatch for over 24 years with the same agency. Thank you, Lena. Jackie Barberini, currently in Redwood City, she has 31 years of dispatch experience. She's worked both small and medium law enforcement 911 centers, as well as a consolidated communication center with law, fire, and EMS. She's a past NAPCO Chapter President, a current NAPCO Director. She teaches at the Local Dispatch Academy as a postmaster instructor. She's a member of AppCo International Standards Committee, and Chair of the AppCo Occupational Analysis Subcommittee. We also, and immediate past President of Northern California AppCo, if I didn't say that. We also have with us today Don Jones, EMP, Dispatch Manager with the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office, Cal-Nina's First Vice President, and has 20 years' experience in 911 industry. We also have Mike Dorian, Communication Supervisor with the City of Hayward, 911. He has 15 years in the 911 industry. We have Mark Chase with the City of Palo Alto, who's the current Cal-Nina Secretary. And we also have Mark Smith, who's a registered lobbyist, the owner of the Smith Policy Group. He's been a lobbyist working in Sacramento and Washington DC since 2007, and is currently working with Cal-Nina to prioritize the voice of the 911 dispatch community in relevant policy conversations related to reclassification, police reform, and other areas. Welcome, panelists. We'll discuss topics relevant to public safety communications. Each panel member will have the opportunity to speak for two minutes on the topic presented. So, I ask that the participants sit back, relax, and enjoy this informational engagement with our Public Safety Communications Forum, and we will have questions at the end, and we'll monitor the chat even after the discussion has been completed. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. And first up, although emergency communication centers are used to managing crisis, COVID-19 has brought a new set of challenges to centers. From physically locking down facilities, which prevented projects from moving forward, to staffing shortages, to council hygiene. Please share how the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted your center and any lessons learned. So, we'll kind of go in the order of in which the panel was introduced. So with that, we'll start with Alina, then Jackie, then Don, Michael, Mark Chase, and then Mark Smith.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. So, the pandemic created a unique set of circumstances for Alameda County Sheriff in general. We're the county, we're the regional coordinator for emergency services. So our OES was, of course, immediately activated, but nobody included dispatch or the 911 community in those conversations or in that lockdown. So, we got together, created our AC Allied group, and started sharing information amongst each other. So it initially began right around March, what, 12, 14, somewhere in there? The beginning stages of March, right when the lockdown first happened. And we started meeting once a week via conference call, just to talk about what staffing was like, what protocols we had put in place, what we considered a best practice, and then it evolved into sharing ideas on how are you acknowledging or adhering to the six-foot requirement in that little bit of space that you have to make it work? So we were sharing photos of the protective barriers we were putting up, where we were getting them from, who had a good cleaner, you know, green clean. So it has really become a community of sorts, and I think it's really brought all of our agencies closer together, forced us to work in ways we hadn't anticipated, made us consider options for dispatching and dispatch personnel and protocol. If we ran out of people, we all had programs in place for if the equipment failed, but nothing for when there were no people to man the equipment. So we really had to think in that direction, and I think it's been a good thing overall. It's really brought us to a place where we think, really, outside of the normal lines of what 911 is.
Thank you, Lena. And Jackie?
Hi, everyone. We had actually a different experience here. We were included in the initial COVID response. So, as a department, we took each department and broke it down into... They first attacked the staffing, so they went from 20, 40, 60, and then by percentages. So if, for example, I lost 20% of the staff in the comm center, what does that schedule look like? If I'm down, if I lose 40%, now what does that schedule look like? At what point do I, you know, assume a shift? What point does our lead assume a shift? So those things, we looked at all of that stuff pretty quickly because patrol was asked to do that pretty quickly. So they just kind of scooped us up in there along with that, and also records did the same thing. So, it's very, it's been impactful in a number of ways. I think we had some positive stuff come out of it. The dispatchers had some really good ideas, like each one has now, you know, they always had their own headset, but now they all have their own keyboards. They have their own kind of personal space stuff. And we got really good at making sure the center was clean. And for those of you who work in comm centers, no, that's not always an easy task. But we just kind of went 100% in with making sure everything was always wiped down. If I was at Walgreens and there were cleaners there, happened to be on the shelf, I grabbed some. If a dispatcher was there, just shopping for their normal, you know, stuff, they grabbed some because we had all those shortages. So I think it kind of, the positive that came out of it was that we started really working as a team. We've been really lucky here, and I should knock on some wood around here, that our staffing has not been impacted. We had a couple scares, but it turned out to just be the flu, which was perfectly fine. So we haven't had any positive cases on the patrol side. They've had six, I believe. But that was another thing we implemented right away. Patrol was not allowed to come in with the comm center. They're not allowed to go into records either. They are the highest, you know, at risk. So, we just kind of, really kind of got down and took it pretty seriously. In my personal opinion, I was like, oh geez, we're really taking this too far. But looking back, I'm really thankful that we put those things in place, because I think it saved a lot of us. We also implemented in the department, they came, they come through the comm center three times a week with the lighting. I'm forgetting what it's called now, and they sweep the comm center with... I forgot the name of it, the lighting that kills COVID, basically. So, we all have to wear our glasses if they're in there, and they just clean the center and make sure that there's no hidden bacteria anywhere. And that, they go across all the keys, the keyboards, the monitors, everything. Anything that they can shed a little bit of light on. So we did kind of all those little things and then some really big things, and it was a good combo.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Don, do you want to make comments?
Yeah, so you know, a lot like what Lena and Jackie have already said. You know, we obviously shut down our center pretty quickly from any kind of visitors, not just patrol. We didn't want anybody from the outside, any spouses, any children, anybody like that. We're not allowed into our center. You know, what was interesting about us, even politically, you may or may not know, at one point, our sheriff basically said that he's not going to enforce any of the COVID kind of rules regarding masks and whatever. So that didn't help our call volume regarding people's confusion over what they could and couldn't do, especially in the beginning. But I would say our call volume was down really early on, so we took advantage of that and lowered our staffing levels to give people even more of a break to kind of get out of the center in the event of we had to have less staff, which fortunately for us as well, knock on wood, hasn't happened. We also, you know, got in touch with the PSAP within our county. And then one time early on, we're having bi-weekly meetings regarding staffing issues in the event of one of them or us had an outbreak, what we were going to do staffing-wise, because, you know, everybody's really operating off of a shoestring budget. And none of that materialized, you know, it's like Jackie said, we had a couple scares as well collectively. None of those have materialized, and fortunately for us, we just remodeled our center. So we went from 12 to 14 workstations, but that expanding actually helped us give us more space in between dispatchers, more than six feet, which has helped us. And as a Cal-Nina Board, we felt very fortunate that we just missed it, right? We had that huge conference in the beginning of March, and we had 500-plus people, and nothing had transpired from that. We didn't, you know, we weren't a hotspot for that spreading throughout our community. So we feel like we dodged a bullet there, so.
Thank you, Don. Michael?
So Hayward, we're part of Alameda County, so we're really fortunate, and thank you, Lena, for all the work you guys have done with the AC Allied, because it's been great to have those regular conference calls to hear what everyone else is doing. We were a little bit late to the race in terms of how we responded. City Hall, basically their reaction was, we're going to send everybody home. So City Hall effectively shut down. Here at the PD, we really kind of left untouched and really got not a whole lot of direction. But over the past, the first few couple weeks, we started to implement some measures. Fortunately, we didn't have any scares. We did have one employee who got reassigned to work in the COVID-19 call center we have at City Hall, because in our center, there's no way you can be socially distanced from anybody. We have nine positions, and they're usually always filled. But some things we did is we got the, everyone has their own keyboards. We have a little, I don't know how to describe it, but it's like a little robot when you walk into the building. We locked all the doors. There's only one way in. Of course, you can exit through any door, but it's a little machine that takes your temperature and it yells at you if you have a high temperature. When I was walking in today, I had my coffee, and it scanned my coffee, and it set off an alarm and said my temperature was 109, so kind of scared me. So I think where we're at right now is we're, you know, we have the cleaning crew come in twice a week. You know, of course, we have some challenges with people not liking the smell of the cleaning chemicals, and just having the, you know, the cleaning crew all over their workspaces, but it's been great in keeping the room really clean. The one challenge that we're experiencing now is we're starting to have employees take advantage of the CFRA. So we're looking at putting some of our staff on a modified schedule, and that's been a really big challenge, because we're, we're pretty chronically understaffed in Hayward, so right now, that's something we're kind of working through. We also started, we opened up to the entire department to cross-train different employees as call takers to supplement our call taker staffing, which has helped. And so that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Michael. Mark Chase? You have to unmute. We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. And Palo Alto, a lot of similar things to the themes that have been discussed. We locked down our center pretty quickly, so nobody in comm, except for comm personnel spacing people out. We have tried a variety of different cleaning methods. I know as far as the keyboards go, we did lose a couple of generation keypads because the dispatchers were using, you know, the very strong medical-grade wipes and managed to take out a couple of the generation keypads, so that wasn't a fun time. But in general, I would say, staffing-wise, we were affected. The city council decided to make some pretty drastic budget cuts, and the Police Department, under which the Dispatch Center falls, was victim to that. So we'd already cut our staffing. The good thing is, Stanford University did not bring their students back at that time. So we did have a decrease in call volume, because they contribute to a lot of our calls. But overall, I would just say, a lot of the more mundane things to think about, right? As far as with all the PD's lockdown, just trying to get a package delivered as far as COVID supplies or things like that, and them getting returned, and just a lot of things like that, that we had to think creatively, because we put up a lot of signs of, hey, if you have, if you're this vendor, please call this or give them a procedure. And the delivery drivers just ignore that. So, that's been a bit of a challenge as far as on our end of just getting supplies and, and things like that.
Thank you, Mark. Mark Smith?
Well, I'm just going to be brief. I approach it from a slightly different perspective. Not a dispatcher, and I'm working a PSAP, but my job, working with Cal-Nina, is to help build relationships, is to get the key decision-makers to understand what life is like for folks who work in this profession. And one way to do that is to bring them into a center and have them see what goes on and have them experience that stress and that reality. And so, as I've worked with Cal-Nina this year and gotten to know the community better, it's one of the things that I've wanted to do that COVID has prevented us from doing. So, I'm really looking forward to moving past this, and we'll talk maybe a little bit more about it later in the panel. But, you know, again, having those key decision-makers come into your places of work and understand what really goes on, so that when they implement policies, they're doing it in a way that is a benefit to you and not an obstacle. The only other thing I'll note is that just from my perspective is that there really has been a renewed appreciation for the value and the role of first responders and what folks do in that space every day. Nothing like a national crisis, a healthcare crisis, to really drive that and bring that home. So, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you very much. So moving to topic number two, we're going to talk a bit about California wildfires. California wildfires, they've continued to grow in frequency and magnitude. And the 2020 wildland fire season has so far not disappointed us. These fires are often plagued by miscommunication and at times confusing management. Both of these create significant problems for dispatch centers as we manage both equipment, information, and evacuation questions. This year, some departments began to rely heavily on social media, which ended up leaving gaps, large gaps in communication, as dispatch centers struggled to find timely incident information. Please share with us how fires have affected your center and any lessons learned on what should dispatch centers, what dispatch centers should be doing before a fire hits their area. Alina?
So, we are a law enforcement-only center. However, when we're called upon, we have participated actively in nearly every single fire that has occurred in the Northern California region up to the Oregon border. We've been to Butte, we've been to Santa Cruz, we've been everywhere, Napa. Alameda County Sheriff is there. We're dusty, we're on the ground, we're helping in whatever way we can. And what Brenda said about the communication is really key, because we did have some, the Lightning Complex Fire that affected parts of Santa Cruz. It actually hit in a three-county area in the corner of our county, Modesto County and Santa Cruz altogether. They called it the Lightning Complex Fire. It was the one that started because of the lightning strikes. And we were there helping with evacuations, moving people, moving cattle in some cases. And we were getting instructions from a lot of different people. So someone called dispatch and say, hey, why are your guys doing this? And we were told, or they were told to do that by someone else. So a unified system of communication in that instance would have helped. I know we were over three counties, and it did get a little confusing, but I don't know how, because we're not a fire agency, how you guys would work that out. But that would have been helpful for us. And we were getting in dispatch our information from social media, because that would be the first definite thing we saw, was the social media posts. And they would, our PIO would tell us, you know, hey, check social media, I just did an update, if anybody calls. So that's what we were getting.
Thank you, Lena. Jackie?
So we are also a law enforcement-only comm center. We were impacted in just a couple ways. Most of the impacts, I'm sure Don will be, is our expert in this. But as far as the center just kind of being in the area where it's super smoky, we are a primary PSAP, so we would get, we were getting the initial calls of, even though, you know, the fire in, you know, Sonoma County had been going for a week, we were still getting calls in here about smoke investigations, and we would connect them to the fire department. But trying to triage those calls can be complicated sometimes to try and figure out if it's really actually a new fire or is it just the lingering smoke? Because our officers will respond with fire on actual fires, but we didn't want to continue to send them on, you know, calls that were just actually smoke from runoff from the fires. And that was one thing that the dispatchers were dealing with just on daily calls. The other thing was officers from here were deployed to assist with traffic control and security, basically. And when you deploy, you know, 20% of your patrol staff, it starts to impact regular day-to-day operations, and so calls were delayed. People aren't as patient with you when they have to call back two or three times to get an actual response. So those are just the ripple effects, but we weren't necessarily impacted firsthand by the fires. And then, if I could just put a plug out for our TIRP teams in California, so if you are not familiar with TIRP, please get familiar, because when that fire or catastrophic event hits your communication center, and unfortunately, it probably will at some point, and you need help, you need to be familiar with the TIRP programs and how dispatchers can help you from other areas. We have sent on TIRP response to other agencies in fires, actually, where they have the same CAD as us, so that we can kind of just go in. And all the, really, the TIRP dispatchers are doing is assisting with the call volume, you know, because you keep your primary dispatchers on the radio, and then you put the secondary dispatchers in those call taker positions. And, and then the, you had said something about the social media. Our dispatchers also do Nixls constantly in here, smaller, lower-level Nixls, so they're very familiar with how to put out alerts, and that goes to our social media. And we, if we have to, we can get onto the larger Everbridge software platform and do it that way. But if your dispatchers aren't used to doing those kinds of alerts, they may be the only option when something like this happens. So, it's a really good idea to get them trained up, let them practice a little bit on the lower-level stuff, so they're comfortable with it, even though I know what you're thinking. The last person that should be putting out a Nixel is the dispatcher who's, you know, in the middle of this mess. But sometimes you're the, they're the only option, so, and they work through it.
Thank you, Jackie. Don? You're muted. You have to unmute.
I knew it. I was on mute. Get me a shirt, Mark. You know, there's some things that you don't want to be an expert in, right? But here we are in Sonoma County, so, you know, for, it seems like every year since 2017, we just keep getting hammered. And, you know, the cumulative stress on our dispatchers, on our staff, but also in the community. So, you know, when we had these recent fires, the glass fire, I'm starting to forget the names of these fires, but... You know, the public was calling in about the fire that was, you know, miles, you know, dozens of miles away potentially, but, you know, the fear of what happened in 2017 with how fast it moved, you know, us telling them that they're not in harm's way didn't help us, right? Because they're like, well, you said that in 2017, and look what happened. So, and it's hard to kind of convince the public that this isn't the case with this fire and everything. Obviously, every fire is different, but that cumulative stress has been very difficult. We're getting way better at, though, I got to tell you. Getting those evacuations done ahead of time, having, we had a retired deputy who basically went through and drew our entire county, put it into zones. So now we say zone one, Frank, two, you are now in warning or evacuated status. And having the GAS ability to have them put their address in and see what zone they're in, I think has helped out tremendously. So, the call volume, I would say, has gone down tremendously. Whenever a red flag warning goes out, people are truly now paying attention, whereas before they weren't. We also have, as far as social media goes, we have a social media team that actually responds in these kind of events. There's four or five of them, and they work 24/7 when these events happen. So in the event, we need to send out maybe potentially the initial Nixel, telling people to get out. They actually will follow up with everything else after that. They respond to all the Facebook posts and try to get out information regarding that. And truly getting the message out and the word out that we want to get out, and not a message of somebody else's kind of fabricating as far as what's happening, we're being looters and other things like that. So in that way, we're definitely a step ahead of the game. And yeah, we're getting good at this, but we're pretty dang tired of it, I got to tell you that.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate that. Michael?
Like you heard, Hayward, we have nine fire stations, so we're a fairly busy agency. We dispatch police and fire. We've seen a pretty significant rise in our homeless population, and a lot of that's due to COVID-19, because the shelters are not accepting new clients. So on average, we used to have maybe one to two homeless-related fires a day. Now we're seeing we're from five to 15, and those cause, you know, those often cause bigger fires. So that's been a challenge for us, and we've, our fire department has staffed reserve engines, and we've created a couple extra units to help, especially during the summer when it's hotter. Everbridge, for us, is huge. That's been kind of a challenge in the past with making evacuation notifications. Previously, in our department, there was only a handful of people who were authorized to make those notifications. And we found, you know, you get a fire at 4:00 AM, and there's heavy winds, and you need to put that alert out, and it falls on dispatch. So we designate somebody. Everybody in our comm centers required to know how to use, in Alameda County, it's AC Alerts, Everbridge. So what we do is part of our ongoing high-risk, low-frequency training. We require everybody to demonstrate at least once a month that they know how to log into the system and can send out a mass notification alert. So that's been really helpful, because, you know, if any of you are familiar with Everbridge, it's, it's great, but it can be very cumbersome. There's a lot of different steps. So if you don't do it regularly, we previously had code red. I mean, same thing, you have to be familiar with it, otherwise you're going to have, you're going to forget. So, for us, that's been really helpful in getting those out fast. We've been pretty blessed in terms of not having any major fires in Hayward, but our department's been going all over the state helping out. So we've had some resources depleted here, but in terms of our dispatch, I think we've been, we've been trying to stay ahead of the curve with the fires.
Thank you, Michael. Mark Chase?
In Palo Alto, we do police, fire, and we also run our own medics. We do EMD. So that's definitely been a challenge during this time, and we have had a couple of apparatuses that have been deployed to the wildfires. In general, just to speak on the communication piece, it's very important. At the city level, we did daily briefings with the city manager, the entire communications team, as well as all the PIOs from the Police Department, the Fire Department, so we could all have the same messaging. One of the other things that we, that's unique to Palo Alto is we own our own city utilities. So we get a lot of calls about power outages, if they, if they're planned, when they're going to happen, all sorts of things like that. So really, harnessing social media and Everbridge to handle those things. And thankfully, between the Utilities Department and our Emergency Operations Center, they handle most of that. But it is those daily meetings, we did those for at least two, three months before they cut the weekends and then eventually cut them down. So that was really key to get everybody in the city on one call and make sure we were all on the same message. As far as Brenda's initial question about what's the plan for the comm center, right? And what, you know, what are you going to do if you do have to evacuate or something like that? It is really important that we all start thinking about those things. In Palo Alto, we're in a tri-city consortium with our CAD system and our phone system. So, we do have the ability to evacuate and then send a couple of dispatchers to Mountain View, one to Los Altos, and continue operations. We also have an emergency operations vehicle that can be a backup comm center, but it does take a little bit of time to get that set up. One thing I could have mentioned as far as the COVID expenditures, we did go ahead and utilize some funding, and we purchased a Motorola Vesta CommandPost laptop, which was expensive, but it gives us the ability to be able to connect a call taker over a VPN. So we can put a call taker at home, we can put them in another room in the PD should we have a COVID exposure or something like that. So that's something that, that we purchased under emergency funding to try and shore up at least the ability to be able to take calls still from places like that. So, that's all I got to say on that topic.
Thank you, Mark. Mark Smith?
Yeah, again, just approaching it from a slightly different perspective. The one thing I can tell you is that the wildfires have generated a lot of policy conversations in Sacramento and in Washington DC. And a part of that is what happens to grid reliability, what happens to cellphone towers, what happens to people's primary means of connecting to emergency response in the event that a fire does impact that technology in their area. And so there were a couple bills this year. One made it through the process, one didn't. There is often a dialogue that has to take place between the cellphone communications companies and the investments, the costs that they have to bear in order to provide backup power or secure their cellphones, their cell tower sites from the risk of fire. But this is a big public policy conversation, because you guys... But this is a big public policy conversation, because you guys sit there and you do your work every day. But if somebody who is in need cannot get to you, if they can't place a call, send a text, or get through to a dispatch center to notify emergency response that they need help, then the system really isn't functioning. So this is a large part of the policy conversation, and there were small baby steps taken to address it this year. And I think that it's going to be an ongoing part of the conversation as the state moves forward, trying to deal with wildfires.
Thank you, Mark. Moving forward, as if COVID-19 were not enough, in May of 2020, George Floyd died while in police custody in Minneapolis, Minnesota. His in-custody death has sparked protests, both peaceful and critical, all across the California and the county. There's a significant public pressure to reevaluate traditional policing models and operations. There's a significant public pressure to reevaluate traditional public policing models and operations. Many in the public are questioning the role of law enforcement, what should they have to do in responding to calls for help, especially when those calls involve social issues and not a specific criminal act. While most of the focus has been on the field response to these incidents, as you all know, everything that occurs out in the field starts in our centers. And there have already been some attempts to create legislation that could impact the way a 911 center can handle some calls. Today, we have Mr. Mark Smith from the Smith Policy Group. Mr. Smith has been participating in supporting public safety advocacy for years, and more recently was hired by Cal-Nina to assist with moving AB 1945 legislation through the state legislature. Mr. Smith, based on what you're seeing and hearing, what do you think the impact will be on dispatch centers in California? So we're going to go out of order a little bit, so Mr. Smith?
Let me start by saying that I think for the community at large, the success of 1945 was tremendous. The recognition and the reclassification as first responders has been a long time coming and is absolutely appropriate. There are a small handful of states that have moved in this direction, and I think we're hoping that California's leadership really propels Congress to do something related to this issue in the next congressional cycle. As it relates to the broader topic that you brought up, I'll just refer to it, say, as police reform generally. I mean, you hear everything from defund the police to keep everything the way it is and everything in between. I think that we have a fairly progressive legislature in the state of California, and there is a vocal constituency who wants to see changes made to the way that policing takes place. One of the things that we're keeping an eye on, and for those of you that are on the public safety communications distribution list, you've seen with me that various municipalities, states, places like San Francisco, LA, other states across the country are already starting to implement pilot programs in terms of whether they send armed police response to every 911 call that comes in, and how they work with the dispatch community to determine whether they're sending a mental health response or social services or armed response. And many of these proposals are in the pilot stages, because there are going to be kinks that need to be worked out. People are exploring them. I fully anticipate this to be a large part of the policy conversation that moves forward in California next year. And as a result, I think it's critical that you, as professionals, are sitting at that table and representing yourselves with your own voice. Many of you work for law enforcement agencies, fire agencies, joint powers authorities and others, and they would be happy to communicate on your behalf what they think should be done relative to dispatch. But most importantly, dispatch itself needs to be at that table and having that voice. One concrete example we already saw at the end of this legislative year, and thankfully it didn't move through the process, was an attempt to restructure the 911 advisory board. And while it might have been well-intentioned, the proposal was to remove certain organizations from representation on the board, Cal-Nina being one of them, and replacing those positions with mental health professionals. Now, that's clearly not the right place to insert that policy conversation, because that board is all about the technical operation and implementation of 911, next-generation 911. But it just shows you the thinking of some members of the legislature, how they want to address this, but they need guidance, they need guidance from the community on the appropriate way to address this. I can't tell you whether there'll be a statewide policy or whether this is going to devolve down to the local agencies at the local level, but what I can tell you is I expect that this will be a large part of the policy conversation related to police reform. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, Mark. Alina?
So from my perspective, as a law enforcement-only agency, there's a lot of want to interfere with how we do business, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. You know, change is always good, we can always evaluate the way we do business to do business better. So I'm not opposed to that. However, as Mark mentioned, we need to have a voice at that table, because some of the ways that they've thought of approaching it may not necessarily be appropriate for this type of arena. For instance, they want, like he mentioned, the pilot programs, to have us send armed or unarmed response to certain situations, or us to determine who's to go where. And dispatchers, I know when that was brought to their centers, they weren't comfortable with that role. I can't determine if he's going to flip out when they get on scene and kill somebody. So I'm not comfortable sending an unarmed response to little Johnny who's having a meltdown. So what came about was, well, then we need to have social workers in the 911 center, but they're not equipped to handle all 911 calls. So how is that going to be effective in the long run? So there needs to be a lot of conversation, and the knee-jerk reaction to have it done right now or to implement something right away just to say we're progressive isn't going to be effective or sustainable in the long run. So it really needs to have some thought behind it, it needs to have subject matter experts participating in those conversations.
Can I add something really quickly to that? And just another, another great example, I mean, there are social services that are out there in the community that could respond to some of these incidents, but many of them only operate eight to five, Monday through Friday. And so when you are having these policy conversations and somebody says, well, it's as simple as instead of calling 911, we're going to set up like an, I don't know, a 999, and people will call them. But the solutions are more complicated than that, because the infrastructure isn't in place. And again, the 911 community needs to be a part of those conversations to ensure that there's a seamless integration and that the right structures are being put into place. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the running joke with us. We have a CAT team, which is a community activist, something, whatever, for mental health issues, and they only operate during business hours. So we said, plan your meltdowns appropriately, otherwise you will not be getting assistance.
Thank you, Alina. Jackie?
We are also, there's four, at a pilot program. Expert will go onto emergencies that are
We're getting you freezing up on your computer.
Are you there?
Yes. You're kind of going in and out just a bit.
Desktop, so I'm not sure. Should I keep talking?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Let's go try it.
We have that, I guess, for a those specialists would only be and so you kind of it's forty hours for them to be. And that's not always. So we're looking at those things, too. I am concerned about dispatchers trying to make a determination in a call needs a mental health. So that, that'll have to get flushed out, considering all the points. Second piece to this, going back to that.
We are getting you cutting in and out, Jackie.
Okay.
And I know you have some valuable information to share with us all. But we're going to, we're going to come back to you.
Yeah.
Just to kind of keep moving this forward and being progressive with our time. Don Jones?
Yeah, you know, obviously, we've had some instances here. We had one instance where a dispatcher was coming in at one point during the day, and a group surrounded her car, were banging on her car, and calling her all sorts of names, because she was trying to drive into the office. So I think safety needs to be paramount during any kind of these situations. And you know, seeing barricades in front of your office is never fun, but I think we need to do what we've got to do to protect our people. I'm going to recuse the rest of my time for Mark's, for Mark Smith with what he's said, so thank you.
Thank you, Don. Mark Chase, did you have anything?
I just would say, in the larger conversation, when you look at what's going on in other states, I believe Seattle and Washington, they put their comm center under the fire department instead of the police department. So there's definitely that reaction to remove police from the conversation in a lot of different topics. We had a discussion with Senator Skinner's office from Oakland when she tried to remove a couple of people from the 911 advisory board and put mental health professionals on there, and explained to her that's a very technical committee. But when we recommended that she follow up with posts, she, her staff wanted no part of even discussing it with them, even though we explained that that's where dispatch standards come from and things like that. So we are going to have to educate people and really explain to them how things work right now. And like we said on the conversation with Senator Skinner, at least I did, I don't care who I'm sending to an emergency. If you want me to send a clown car, I'm happy to, but just I need a clear standard of what I'm going to do and who I'm going to be sending. And we're happy to have that discussion, but we want to make sure that we send people in a timely manner, so people get the help they need.
Thank you, Mark. Michael?
I don't have a, I don't have an awful lot to add, and I know this is part of a much larger conversation that we're having nationally. Lena mentioned in Alameda County, we have CAT team, it's a community assessment transport team. It's kind of a pilot program, because most, the average crew on an ambulance is not trained to deal with a psychiatric patient. So they have a licensed clinician and an EMT that are available only during limited hours, which they just put out, they're expanding the hours. So we've, we've had some challenges with it, but overall, it's been really positive. It's alleviated the need to have units stay on a 5150 call for an extended period of time. So we're hoping that that program continues to improve and expand. I have a PowerPoint that they sent out, if anybody wants it, just feel free to reach out to me. And beyond that, we also kind of had some discussions about, recently in San Francisco, they passed the Karen Act, and it basically is making it unlawful to call 911 on the basis of someone's race. So we're having conversations with our staff about, you know, what defines suspicious person? Are you automatically going to put it in as a suspicious person call? If, you know, the person just says, oh, well, there's someone walking down my street. So I understand it's somewhat difficult conversation to have, and dispatchers were all concerned about liability, you know, when in doubt, send them out. But I think we need to look at that more. And also, we've been emphasizing quality assurance. Everybody gets quality assurance calls for a month, where the supervisors audit calls, not just EMD-wise, but listening to the calls, making sure the appropriate questions are being asked and that we're providing the high level of customer service. Because I think that also goes into the public perception of law enforcement right now, which, which kind of plays a big part in this.
There was a bill at the state level, Reggie John Sawyer carried it, AB 1775, and it does increase the penalties for using the 911 service for harassment. And it does extend additional rights to the victims of that harassment, much like the Karen law in San Francisco. And my concern with that is that when you set up a bunch of different policies, every city has a different policy or a different standard for restitution in terms of legal action or whatnot, the landscape gets super, super confusing. I'm not saying that those solutions are not right, but it does make it, that patchwork across the state makes things incredibly confusing sometimes and can create a scenario where the professionals such as yourselves can be caught up in something, perhaps unintentionally, but you know, that's always the biggest thing to watch out for, making sure that that liability does not extend to people who are simply answering the phone and following a protocol and attempting to address the situation in the best way possible.
Thank you, Mark. Michael, I appreciate your comments. And we're going to go back to Jackie Pace to follow up with her statements from before.
So I just wanted to bring up a topic that we haven't talked about, and that is sometimes in your comm centers, people really have different opinions about how these things should move forward, and, you know, everything from defunding the police to you name it. So for me, it was really important for me to kind of get in front of that and make sure everybody was on, was, first of all, respectful of each other and was on equal ground. You know, we don't, you know, there's a city ordinance, not city ordinance, there's a city rule that says you don't bring politics to work, which I think is a good one. But some people forget that, you know, there's other topics that should just stay, you should check those at the door. So a good reminder, just for your dispatchers, whatever your personal opinion is, we work for our agencies and the leaders of our agencies, you know, and saying, you know, bringing sometimes your personal opinion into the comm center can undermine the overall mission. And it also can be pretty hurtful. You might be sitting next to somebody that you did not know feels a certain way about a certain topic. So obviously, the George Floyd incident seemed pretty obvious, and it was, you know, pretty upsetting across the board for anyone I've ever spoken to. But what's rolled out of that, the defunding the police and a lot of protest, we had a protest here in town where we arrested somebody, because they brought basically a knife, machete object to the protest. And then, because we arrested that person, that team, our downtown unit, and the sergeant of that unit received death threats, his family received death threats. And so there's a lot of extra ripples that come from this. And as a supervisor of the unit, I, you know, try to manage the emotional piece of these topics, and that can be pretty challenging. So I just wanted to throw that out there, just remember to kind of be on the lookout for those types of things and in order to make sure the comm center is still a nice place to come to work.
Thank you, Jackie. I want to make sure I get everybody on that one. And we're going to wrap it up with the last finale topic. So in May of 2019, Assembly Member Rudy Salas's office received a request from Hanford PD Dispatch Supervisor, Marybel Stinson, asking him to support dispatchers as first responders. APCO worked with the Assembly Member's Office to discuss a recent bill in Texas and how his office could support dispatchers in California. In October, both boards of APCO and Nina worked together to create a coalition to assist Assembly Member Salas's office as he worked to finalizing his creation of the bill. Having seen the benefits of using a lobbyist in the past, Cal-Nina hired Mr. Mark Smith of the Smith Policy Group to lead our efforts as we navigated the California legislative process. Over the next nine months, both associations with the leadership of Mr. Smith worked feverishly to support the goal of passing AB 1945. During these nine months, we encountered several obstacles. I believe it was without question by anyone involved in the process that we would not have been able to overcome some of the obstacles if it were not for the leadership of Mr. Smith. And on September 11, 2020, Governor Newsom signed AB 1945, which recognized public safety dispatchers as first responders in California. Mr. Smith, can you share with us your experience?
I'm going to be really brief here and let those of you who are professionals talk about what this means to you and how long this process has been forthcoming. What I can say is that you guys are in a sweet spot when it comes to the legislature. Everybody respects the work that you do. I think that there's a greater appreciation to build for it, but there is not anybody over there that wants to turn their back and shut their door when somebody from the 911 community, the dispatch community, comes in and says, we have a concern, and we want to talk to you about something. I think that Mr. Salas is indicative of the kind of legislator that we have across the street, across the street from my office, where I'm sitting here in downtown Sacramento, who appreciates the fact that police reform is a discussion that we need to have, but there are elements of it that work, work appropriately, and provide the continuity of service that the public expects. There were obstacles, Brenda, as you pointed out, but I think it was the professional but I think it was the professionalism of this community and some of the relationships that you've already built that helped to turn those obstacles around. So the professional firefighters was one of them, for example. They were opposed to the bill when it was first introduced. They ended up dropping their opposition, and that was a pretty significant thing in terms of moving this policy forward. I believe by the time we got to the end of the session, we only had one minor group that still had concerns about the bill moving forward. And so the community did a great job at addressing the concerns, working with those people in opposition and moving a policy forward. And that is the way that the policy process works. You're not operating in a vacuum. You have to talk to your opponents. You have to try to find accommodation, and you have to try to find a way to move forward. So I don't want to take a lot of the credit here at all. I want to give due credit to Mr. Salas's office. Cal-Nina has determined that they're going to give him a Legislator of the Year Award, which I think is justly and rightly deserved, also to his staff because Mr. Salas's staff was instrumental in moving this measure through the process and being there and working with our community. So I'll leave it at that and let others respond. It was my pleasure to be a small part of this conversation, and I'm just super happy that this happened for all of you.
Thank you, Mark. Panel members, do any of you want to share your thoughts on AB 1945 and what's next for dispatchers?
I'll just take a couple minutes. I think, you know, it's interesting, it started with one voice, right? I think we've all been struggling for years about how do we move this forward? And there we are, Hanford PD, Marybel Stinson steps up and gets the ball rolling. And, you know, it was a team effort, you know, there was late nights of eight o'clock conference calls going, "Hey, we're worried about this, and how do we do this and that"? And, you know, Mark Smith was great about, you know, and I want to call it a game, it's politics, right? So in a lot of cases, you have to do X and Y to make things work. And there were a few times where we thought, you know, because of COVID, you know, without anything that we could have done, that this bill could have not happened. But luckily, that didn't happen. And sometimes dispatcher like, "Well, this doesn't do anything for me." Well, maybe, depending on what you're looking for, but it's a start, and you have to start somewhere. So this is the first step. And yeah, do we want to have more? Do we want to, of course, maybe acquire public safety retirement down the line? Yeah, if we can, but we had to do this first. And without this, we can't do anything else. So, and this is, you know, like Mark Smith said, long time in coming, and we have the respect of legislature, which I think is great. And looking forward to, once this COVID is done, having them in our centers and proving to them and showing them the great work that the men and women do every day. So that's it.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, so I'd like to piggyback on a little bit of what Don said. And just to give a little extra credit to Desi Calzada, he and Chuck Burdane, after a long-range planning committee meeting, decided that they were going to move this to both boards, to Cal-Nina and to the APCO Northern and Southern California chapters, and to really get movement on it because Desi had had a conversation with Assemblyman Salas prior. Right after he was contacted by the dispatcher, Assemblyman Salas reached out to our executive council, which happened to be Desi for our region, because APCO had, in Texas, been successful in getting their bill put through. And the conversation was, "Hey, I want to do this, but let's not talk about it too much because I really want to get it right and not have to do it again." And I have to say that Desi and Chuck, bringing it to both of us and letting us know the value of putting that one voice out there, the APCO and NINA voice together, we all represent 911 as a community. So when it comes to representing you, our members, whether you're a NINA member, APCO member, or both, in our agency, we're members of both, it really needs to be stated that we're here working on your behalf at all times. So there's no us versus them. There's a one voice for 911 when it comes to legislation, and that's what we're about here. I also have to give credit to Jackie Pace. When we did have that firefighter opposition, she came back with a bam from the police officers saying, "But we're on board with this, so now what"? So, you know, people like them who work behind the scenes to really push this forward, they're the ones that really deserve the credit for this. You're not going to see them, only a couple were in the picture, but they did a lot of the work. They did some really phenomenal work behind the scenes and much appreciated. Both boards really came together and said, "We're going to make this happen. We're going to work together. We're going to talk to one another to make sure it happens." And that's what happened.
Thank you, Lena. Anyone else want to chime in? We're about four minutes to the hour, and we're going to start wrapping it up.
I'll just say, to piggyback on what everyone was saying, it was a great team effort. It is going to be a huge hurdle to try and approach something like safety retirement. We did, at one point, the bill went through the Purge Committee on, I can't remember if it was the Assembly or the Senate, was it the Assembly, Mark?
Assembly, yeah.
And there was a lot of feedback from that, basically stating, and a lot of language that was added to ensure that this was in name only, basically, right? And the agencies, you know, do convey on us first responder benefits as far as mental health and things like that. But just so everyone, I know, because everyone, you know, the question constantly comes up, "Well, why do we do this? What, you know, what good is it going to do us in the future"? We're going to have to build a lot of bridges and get a lot of support in the next three to five years. There's no appetite to get safety retirement for dispatchers right now because the state budget is a mess, and it's going to be a mess for the next few years. So we need to take the next two to three years to really work with our lobbyists and our friends in Sacramento and really reach out to these organizations like PORAC, who had some opposition to the bill, and the California Professional Firefighters and these other groups. And we're going to need to build a coalition to be able to take us to that point. So it's, we're talking about a longer-range goal, and it's something that we all would like to see happen, but it's going to require an amendment of the Pepper legislation of 2012. And that's not going to be easy because there's a lot of people that would like to have that legislation amended to get their particular group an enhanced benefit. And it's going to be tough for even a Democratic legislature to say, "Oh, yeah, we're going to give more benefits because of the benefits right now." So just understand that we're all, that's obviously something that we're all interested in, but it's not going to happen in the short term. It's going to be a long-range project, and we're all going to have to work together and get our legislators on board to make that happen. So you're going to be hearing from us again, a lot in the coming years.
Just one more thing, too. Keep in mind that with each state doing this individually, we're going to put the pressure at the federal level for that reclass, which is what kind of started a lot of this discussion. And everybody thinks about the safety retirement, but there are day-to-day benefits that associations and dispatch groups can be looking at, and that's, you know, extra care for PTSD or compassion fatigue or maybe some time off after a big event. And so keep in mind some of those small wins, and we are dispatchers. We have been fighting for every single benefit that you have today for the last 50 years. So this is just another step in the fight. That's all.
Thank you, Jackie. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the panel members and everyone for their input. This has been a great discussion, very informational, very enlightening, very encouraging to the Public Safety Communications Forum and professionals across the board. Thank you all for your participation. And we're just going to wrap it up with that and enjoy the rest of the conference. We keep calling it a conference, but the vendor showcase, enjoyed that. Spend time in some of the other rooms and see what's going on. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for participating. Mark, appreciate your time. Thank you. I know you're busy.
Of course.
For all you do for us.
It's my pleasure. It's also really nice to put some faces to some of the names that I see on email and that I've talked to on the phone. So it's a pleasure to meet you all virtually. Jackie, there was a question for you in the chat. I don't know whether you saw that. Just wanted to make sure that you saw that.
Yeah, that was from me. I want to know about the light. I want to know about the disinfectant light. So if you could shoot me that, because we use Green Clean, and they hate it. It smells horrible.
It's just a standard UV light, but we had to have specialized, somebody had to be specially trained to use it because it can be damaging to your eyes if you look in it. So we have to wear special goggles when they sweep through. I'll put it on there. It's just a standard UV lighting. I asked our property for some while I was waiting.
All right, so operations needs to vacate the room unless you want to participate in the frequency coordination meeting with the North and South chapters. Y'all have fun with that.
You're welcome to stay, too.